Good evening, everyone. It is 6:07 and I'd like to call the March 25th regular meeting of Board of Education, Cape Girardeau School District to order. Let the record show that all members are present except Paul, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is, well, you have it for you, an agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion second, oh, those opposed? Motion seconded and carried. Cut. First, we have recognitions, and I think we have some people who are in a hurry to go somewhere else, so we'll...
We do. Ms. Kribley, if you could start heading your up this...
And it's fine. I think my...
No, we want to respect your time. We're running late, I apologize.
They all are.
They all are? Okay. So, we have a long list of Beta Club state champions and students who placed at state this year, and we're really excited to celebrate them. If Ms. Kribley would come up to the microphone, and you can take over.
Okay. I'm actually going to have all of them come up at the same time so we can get them going. So, if you are a Beta member that is, has qualified for Nationals, we brought all of them, whether they qualified at Leadership Summit or at State Convention, so this is not nearly all of the Betas that we have, so I think face this way. We'll go with that. If you're not familiar with Beta, our Beta Club is part of a national organization, and we have... Just fill in a spot, you're doing great. Beta is a large organization, it's a national organization. It is based on leadership, service, character, and achievement, and we competed at the State Convention in early March and Leadership Summit in September. From that, we had 26 event qualifiers from state, three event qualifiers from Leadership Summit, four event invitations for Nationals. That means that we had 45 national qualifiers out of all of those events. That's 45 individuals that qualified for Nationals. We'll compete in Savannah, Georgia, June 15th through the 19th, and out of those 45, we've got two of our state champions here out of the seven. So, we had seven state champions, which is more than any other school in the state of Missouri. And this is just a small portion of our club. We have over 100 active members. Last year, we had over 4,800 hours of service for our community, and this year, we're well on our way with over 2,500. So, thank you guys all for your support, and I want to just recognize Angela Womack, who's a great co-sponsor, and we've got two all-time chaperones that travel with us. Kelly Snyder's back there. Kelly, give us a wave. And Candace Hyder, who is apparently at home in Jackson with no electricity. So, thank you all very much, and, you know, they did awesome, so congratulate them again, please.
I'm going to have to get in front with those tall ones. You heard him talking. Yeah. Your fancy cloth. That's wrong. That's wrong. That just goes to show you the hard work that Ms. Kribley's and Ms. Womack do every day with our kids. Just congratulations. I'll kind of wait until they kind of meander out. Our next recognition is Annalise Reiner, who was honored as a distinguished student leader by the Missouri Association of Student Councils. Annalise was chosen based on her demonstration of superior student council leadership skills and her knowledge base on the M.A.S.C. criteria for evaluation procedures. Congratulations to Annalise. We might see you here in the boardroom one day. Come on up here. Tell us what M.A.S.C. is. Tell us what that is.
M.A.S.C. is the board association of student councils, so all schools across the state of Missouri all come together and are discerning our capabilities. Thank you.
Next, if I can have Madison Phelps is our next recognition. Madison is the first-ever president scholarship winner at Southeast Missouri State University from Cape Central High School. This is CMO's most prestigious scholarship and award annually to just five students who represent the top of all applicants at Southeast University. So, we're super proud of you, and we'd like to get a picture with you. What is going to be your major?
It's bio-medical sciences.
Very good, thank you. Lastly, we would like to now turn to our focus to the individuals that are sitting here in front of us, our board members. Our school board members devote countless hours to making critical decisions that benefit... I can't read very well, sorry. Decisions that benefit public school students in our community. This month has been designated by the governor as the Missouri School Board Recognition Month for school board members. The governor's office has sent certificates for each of our school boards as a token of appreciation for the sacrifice and time you make to help strengthen our school community. Just appreciate all of you, and thank you guys for all of your hard work. I know we ask a lot from them. We have meetings and long meetings sometimes and tough discussions about what we need to do to move our district forward, so I appreciate all of you, and I also appreciate you giving me an opportunity to lead the district as well. Thank you. Next is Terrific Tigers.
Alma Schrader Elementary, Nathan Young, third grade son of Emily and Lance Young. Nathan is the definition of what an all-around awesome student is. He always shows kindness to others and lends a helping hand. He cares about his education and doing the best he can, and always has a smile on his face. It has been a joy having him in classes here. Keep up the great work, Nathan, and congratulations. Blanchard Elementary, Penelope Estes, third grade daughter of Amanda and Christian Estes. Penny is an amazing student who shines brightly in her classroom. Penny's kindness and empathy shine through in her daily interactions, making her a wonderful friend to everyone. She's attentive in class, follows instructions immediately, takes pride in her work, and strives to do her best. She's a shining star in her class and a role model for her classmates. Clifford Elementary, Zylan Slaughter, fourth grade son of Deandre Nelson and Christopher Zylan's a joy to have in class. He always follows expectations and encourages others to do the same. He's a role model not only for his peers, but also the younger students at Clifford. He always puts forth his best effort and has shown so much growth in academics this year. He's the perfect example of a Clifford Terrific Tiger. Way to go, Zylan. Franklin Elementary, Robert Lee Jackson, fourth grade son of Danielle Jackson. Jefferson Elementary, D'Anthony Mallory, fourth grade son of Kimberly Mallory. D'Anthony consistently shows exemplary character and behavior. He demonstrates kindness by helping classmates and willingness to take responsibility for their actions. He's a role model for others, has a positive attitude always, and has a strong work ethic. With his determination and leadership, he brightens the classroom every day. Jefferson is proud to have him as a Terrific Tiger. Central Middle School, Tristan Hawkins, sixth grade son of Shelby Hawkins and Levi Hawkins. Tristan is a student who works hard in all subjects, always asking how he can improve himself and ready to take advantage of any extra credit opportunities. He's always a great example, he's also a great example to his peers. His mature behavior, amazing work ethic, and overall awesome attitude is a wonderful example to others. We're so proud of Tristan here at CMS. Continue to roar. Terry W. Kitchen Junior High, Taven Hale, eighth grade son of Sicily and Benjamin Hale. Taven is always polite and follows instructions. He is diligent about his assignments and makes sure to try to finish them on time. He has a wonderful work ethic and is helpful to his classmates. Taven is a great example to his peers and a role model for all. Congratulations, Taven, and keep up the great work. Central High School, Mary Ann Dean, 12th grade daughter of Rowan and Brian Dean. Mary Ann is a quiet powerhouse. Not only is she a member of the state champion swim team, she's a brilliant young lady. She works hard in all her classes, and even when she is out for a swim, she completes her work in a timely manner. She's also always been a very effective member of the music department, having participated on multiple instruments and ensembles. Mary Ann is a role model for how to be a responsible, successful student at CHS. Central Academy, Jashawn Price, 10th grade son of Vivian Price and Orlando Price. Okay, from February, Alma Schrader, Nora McGinnity, fourth grade daughter of Jessica and Charles McGinnity. Nora's an outstanding student in person. Nora always puts 100% into all her work. She asks questions and contributes to classroom conversations and is a friend to everyone. Nora is someone for her classmates to look up to, both as a student and a friend. She's a joy to have in class. Nora is doing and will continue to do great things. Central Middle School, Talia Banks, sixth grade daughter of Sheree Timmons. Terry W. Kitchen Junior High, Desmond June, seventh grade son of Tabara and Laquint June. Central High School, Alexander Godby, 12th grade son of Janet and Andrew Godby. And Central Academy, Adrian Thomas, ninth grade son of Shana Radford. That's the list.
We're going to take a photo with you all. We might have to get Mary Ann a chair up here. She's with every board meeting, my friend. The tall one's in the front, and I see her. Look at that. I saw her.
It's warm in here now, isn't it?
Mr. Crowe's trying to save energy.
Ooh, it is warm in here. Ah, it is warm in here.
It's how warm it is right now in here.
There we go. Here, kicking on. All right, next on the agenda is information, proposals, or comments from the audience. As a reminder, I'll just go ahead and read this blurb. Request to place an item on the agenda or to address the board should be submitted in writing at least five days in advance of the regular monthly board meeting. Please submit requests to the board secretary, Brian Payne, at the central administration office. Constituents who request to address the board are allotted three minutes to speak, and if you want some more information on this, please see board policies on the district website. I don't think we have anyone who's requested to speak tonight, so we will move on to informational reports. First is the board president report, which, that's me. I want to thank our CTA for hosting our school board candidate forum last week. We appreciate their efforts to provide our community with an opportunity to learn about the candidates for the upcoming election. And my other piece of information is our next community engagement event is scheduled for April 4th at the junior high, and the theme is academic achievement. So, next we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Kribley. Well, on the CTA, they helped us organize this event that we're getting ready to host on Thursday. It is our substitute teacher appreciation breakfast in collaboration with our CTA. This is coming Thursday here at our office. It'll be upstairs. It's important to recognize this valuable group of individuals because our school district is able to continue functioning each day through those substitute teachers. So, if you know anyone that wants to be a substitute teacher, please send them our way. Next, with food involved, as always, we are also, we've been going out with our food truck, our mobile food truck, so we're, we are... Mr. Beck's looking at, Dr. Beck is looking at me silly because he's usually the one that has to organize all this and help us learn how to cook on the barbecue. We are actually going to roll out to, what building are we going to? I can't even remember. Oh, the junior high, so it will be a big building. So, on Thursday, we will start cooking probably around 7:30. I will be here for the breakfast. Well, first, I'll pull the smoker over to the junior high.
This one's Schrader.
Oh, Schrader. Then I'll be at, for cooking at junior high as well, and board, if you'd like to join us about 11 o'clock to eat some great lunch. I know several of you have been in the past, so please come by on Thursday, so we're looking forward to the meal at Alma Schrader. The last thing I have is to wish everyone a wonderful spring break. Students are out starting this Thursday. Staff will have a professional development day that then the district is closed Friday and Monday, so again, have a restful and safe weekend. That's it.
All right, next on the agenda is CSIP program evaluations, and first up is the Career Technology Center Program Evaluation.
So, you all should have this in front of you, but a couple of key points I will mention first would be the CSIP, the goal objective strategies, and some of the things that we focused on and addressed. One of them being to maintain a high level of student success with course completion and student retention, and so we measure that from one semester to the next, and as you know, we have a lot of different students coming from a lot of different sending schools, including our own. And so, the last two years, that's been at 96% and then 95, or 94.7. So, our goal was 95% for that as far as retention rate for students at the CTC, secondary students in particular. Also, creating a positive culture by connecting, reconnecting with students. You know, after COVID, that's been kind of a big push the last couple of years, and not only does it impact positive school culture and reconnecting with our students, but it also works on soft skills. Some of you have probably come in, we have certain days where we stand out front and greet students with handshakes and eye contact and things like that, so that's one of the things that we'd implemented. We surveyed, and that looked really good, and we had a lot of good results from that, a lot of good feedback from students as well. With these, as far as moving forward and CSIP alignment for our new strategic plan, they're listed as well as far as what they align with moving forward as well. So, another one would be increased opportunities and input from all stakeholders. That's a big one. That's a continual focus for us as we go into every year. Last year was a big one because of our strategic plan that the CTC has, the five-year strategic plan. We invited community members, business leaders, we invited our school personnel as well, and took that input and then created our next five-year strategic plan, which you also have that as well. Some strength of the program, you know, placement would be one for adult and secondary, and then the retention or graduation rate, soft skills, business industry involvement, innovative programming, which we've talked about before, about a registered youth apprentice program, that's been a major focus and that continues to grow, so we're pretty proud of that. Articulated or dual-credit opportunities, in particular with MAC and then CMO as well, those have been things that we've really focused on and have worked on. And then facilities, which we'll talk about in just a minute. But concerns regarding program or data, things that we're always concerned with, our program funding or cost, and how can we improve that? The public image for CTE, one of the neat things, it's big initiative district-wide, and we fell into that as far as this year in the CSIP plan was to get that information out to the public. We've done a lot of spotlights for instructors and programs and social media posts and things like that, trying to make sure that the community and the public know what we're doing and what teachers are involved with that. You know, enrollment, you know, that's something that we really focused on the last couple of years. That's, you know, it's always been pretty good, but it's, we've had to work on trying to get that back, in particular after COVID last couple of years, you know, I mean, hate to keep bringing that up, but that's something that we've really worked on. I will say this, as a, we do this every year, but our prospective student interview day is where we keep all sending school students that are current for us at their sending schools, and we bring in all the new perspectives. And so, we, last week, we had 620 students there. They spend half the morning block in their first choice, the other half in their second choice. We do the same thing all over again in the afternoon, so getting those students involved and letting them see, getting a little more hands-on rather than just their tours, and so we've done that. Getting into the lower levels of summer school, we had a really great summer school the last couple of years. We plan to do that again this year. We hosted Jefferson Elementary, which was a really awesome experience for those kiddos coming in and spending some time, getting to work on like a project-based learning type thing. Ms. Lanfer actually ran that, and a lot of our teachers were involved, a lot of excitement for the youngsters for that, so we're pretty pleased with that. Program goals, you know, additional facilities, programs, which you all are, you know, we try to keep you aware of all of the things that we're working on. Improving our marketing plan, student-staff retention, that's always a goal of ours, promoting, continuing to promote school culture, industry-recognized credentials, and registered youth apprenticeships. You know, those are two, those last two are pretty key for us right now, have been a big focus, and we want to try to make that even more of a focus moving forward as well. Like I said, that the CTC five-year plan, strategic plan was reevaluated in '22, updated, and it's attached as well. You know, we wanted to continue to develop plans supporting the region's workforce and educational needs. Conversations within the community, continue to address the gaps in educational opportunities. Meanwhile, we, you know, we hope to work with advisory committees, business and industry leaders, higher education partners to develop credential programs that address the workforce needs. One other thing I will mention, last week, we done, or a couple of weeks ago, we done our mock interviews, where we bring in, generally, it's over 80 employers to interview our students as a practice. It turns into a lot of hiring opportunities, but we completed over 500 last year, and we were the same way this year. We done, I think, 536 student interviews that were conducted by business and industry, so we're pretty excited about that, so hopefully getting students in front of those folks and then getting them jobs. Is there any questions for me?
Mr. Crowley, I actually hired one of your students from that, and we brought their name to the board tonight.
Perfect, perfect. That's what we like to hear. Good.
We'll come back next year.
Come back every year. Yeah. Any other questions? Anybody? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have CSIP Learn 4. Dr. Beck?
That'll actually be Mr. Russell.
Mr. Russell.
All right, so Learn 4 is about curriculum updating and enhancing our instruction, and so what it is, I went through every piece of our action plan and did an update on what we're doing. So, the curriculum, cycle and alignment process, we talked a little bit upstairs about, you know, overall kind of what that looks like, but we've updated our curriculum to, we're still continuing the eight-year cycle, but we've kind of spread it out a little bit to make the changes a little bit easier, especially for elementary. Working on a new process of resource selection and curriculum development that aligns with the CSIP along with board policy and some of the changes that have happened over the last year or so. Pacing guides analysis and alignment, we spent a lot of time this year going through and looking at our current curriculum and pacing guides and making sure that they align to what the state expects and make sure that we're, you know, fully aligned, and then working on processes to, or to fill in those gaps where we're not, and so. Scroll down, I'm sorry, I'm looking at one computer and controlling another. The second action plan was about developing a way to identify instruction, low trends across our assessments, and so one of the things that we've started doing this year, Nick and Tina going out to the buildings and their meeting with department chairs and curriculum reps for the grade levels, reviewing pacing guides, looking at their benchmark data, having those discussions to update our curriculum where necessary, and, you know, diving deeper into, you know, if we're scoring low in a certain area and a certain topic, you know, where are we, where are we helping teachers, and where are they making changes to help students? And then, it's not just with the chairs, but also classroom visits, and just to let you guys update... And just to let you guys update, we've been doing this for a few years, but we have been tracking, you know, how we do for every standard, every year. That's what you guys, an example of that earlier. And this is kind of the overall strands and how we do year-over-year on those. And every teacher has access to this and so, oh, thank you. Just have to remind me. Scroll at the same pace here. And we're working on a Galileo version of this, so this, what you see here is our map test version. But we are working on a Galileo version, it's just, there's a lot more data because we test more often than once a year, we're testing three times a year. And so it's a lot more rows and trying to fit that somewhere that makes it functional is not very much fun. In the implementation process of Galileo, we're in our second year of sixth through eighth and our first year still of, at the high school. Working on map, EOC tested areas and learning how to do that test and then how to go over the results. So it's a year-over-year thing, new staff comes in, that's a constant PD item for our department at least with Galileo. And the PD planning process. You know, there's things that we do every year along with the PD process, but, you know, we survey our teachers and then, you know, we look at data as well. But, you know, we have, especially like, for example, this year with reading, with our readings, what are those called? New reading plans?
RSPs.
Yeah, there are.
Reading success plans.
You know, doing resource-specific training on those. Again, going back and ensuring pieces like vertical teaming are a part of that going into next year. We talked about that at our PD meeting. And then making sure that too, that we facilitate curriculum work time to update things and have these conversations year-over-year moving forward. Professional development too, connecting with teachers with the content experts. We, we have spent a lot of time with CMO, CMO's RPDC, which is their professional development for the Southeast region from the state. Learning how to do RSPs, but also other trainings as well. And so, you know, we've spent, we've sent a lot of teachers off to PD and other high school. Lining out nexters PDs is always fun, they're going to a lot of cool places. And then other buildings are also sending their folks out as well. And then this year, our PD plans and building improvement plans are being done kind of at the same time so that they reinforce each other and help, you know, align with the C SIP along with the building plans. And so hopefully that will help us even better align all of our efforts. That's all I got. Any questions?
Thank you. Next, we have Academic Services Report. Which is a Yonder program update.
So I'm just going to kind of kick off the discussion about this tonight. Obviously, second semester with the approval of the board, we were able to implement the Yonder system at CHS when we kicked off second semester. Creating a cellphone-free environment where pouches were checked out to every student. I'm just going to share a brief snapshot of some information, but I'm going to ask Ms. Scheller and her team to join me up here. So Ms. Scheller is our head principal at the high school, obviously, and then joining her tonight, we have Ms. Kelly Doobes, who's a science teacher at CHS. And we have Ms. Kim Newman, who's also a facts teacher. Quick summary for me before I sit down and really let you hear from those individuals is we implemented this January ninth, which was the first day of second semester. Yonder pouches were assigned to the entire student body that day, so we did check out in one day. That was one of the biggest fears I had about it, was getting all the pouches assigned to twelve hundred kids in one day, but it ran rather smoothly. With the Yonder implementation team, we were able to do our first pouch check the following day on January tenth. They kind of explained to us going into that, like what that looks like, like tampering, damage assessment, things like that. They said we had a flawless implementation at CHS, large part in due to the support of our staff and our team there. We had less than three percent less tampering of all pouches that were assigned to students. They said that typically averages around seven to nine percent, so that was really good. They said that speaks volumes about the student body. And then right now, currently, leading into this, we're ten weeks of maintaining a cellphone-free environment at Central High School with this new product. So leading into that, we did a survey with our certified staff, the teachers at the high school. So I'm going to let Ms. Scheller share that information with you about the survey and then hear from her staff.
Hello. I want to share a few, some data, somebody's, there you go. Going to put some data up there for me. We had fifty-three staff members who completed the survey. I have seventy-nine staff members, but of those seventy-nine, I have some that, who students wouldn't bring a cellphone and others who are only on my campus a couple hours a day. But fifty-three took it, so out of the seventy-nine, that's about sixty-seven percent of my staff who took that survey. And up here, we'll show the data and it's pretty consistent throughout. First, we asked if it reduced distractions in the classroom, allowing students to focus on classroom instruction. So about ninety-eight percent said agree or strongly agree. The next one, we're going to, improvement in student engagement due to the Yonder pouch. We have about ninety-four point four percent who agreed or strongly agreed. Positively impacted student-teacher, student-to-student social interactions during class, ninety-eight point one percent. And this for me is my favorite part. If you come to our cafeteria, if you walk in our hallways, if you had seen it prior, the amount of eye contact, the amount of conversation, laughter. Our noise level is louder in the cafeteria and the hallways, which is fabulous, it's awesome. Next one, the teachers were asked if their overall effectiveness in the classroom has increased due to the absence of cellphones, resulting in less redirections of negative student behavior, and ninety-four percent agreed that it did, are strongly agreed. Create a more focused and conducive learning environment, ninety-four point three percent. Has enhanced the level of teaching and learning in my classroom, is ninety-eight percent. And the ability to provide classroom instruction and minimize classroom distraction, and ninety-six point three percent agree or strongly agree there. I know the questions seem relatively similar, but we wanted to make sure we ask a lot of questions to see if we got the same data and we did. Also, one piece of data, we had, and thank you to Jamie for pulling this, but last year, at the beginning, like term four, I guess, from January to the end of February, we had a hundred and forty-six referrals that ended in OSS or ISS. We're not proud of that, but that's what we had. This year, we had ninety-six, so that was a reduction of thirteen point three six percent just in that timeframe, which is huge. And that's a big deal, we want our kids in school. I can't say, obviously, it all relates to the Yonder pouch and a cell-free campus, but it is the only big thing that we changed, so it is very positive. Now, I'll let the ones in the trenches talk.
Hello. I don't have too much more than what the data tells you. In my classroom, kids are more focused, they're paying attention to me, they're talking to each other. In the hallways, they're not running into each other because they're actually looking up, they're not on their phones. It's funny, but they do, when they're on their phones, they're running into each other. Now they're looking up, they're talking in class, there's a lot less drama in class because they're not texting each other in class about something that happened. When we have issues that happen in the hallways, it's not being carried on to class because they're not still talking about it. I have a lot less missing assignments because kids are focused in class, they're doing their work, all of that stuff.
Well, I'm not for sure I have anything brand-new to add to that, with the exception of I'm loving the face-to-face contact and conversations that my students are having. The first day, we had survived a fifth hour, you know, because at the beginning of the day, some of them, like literally didn't know if they would survive. And I kind of felt panicked for them because, I mean, they were oozing the panic and I was like, oh my gosh, are we going to be able to do this, you know? Anyway, kids sat down and looked face-to-face and I heard two young ladies introduce themselves to each other with their first names, their last names, what grade they were and why they were taking the class. And I was like, ah, my heart was just singing. And so, but everything that they said, the distraction is just, I mean, it's crazy. There are, there have been a few kids who have kind of, kind of flipped to their Chromebook to be their distraction. What's easy about that is those are our Chromebooks and so it's a lot easier to have them close it, turn it off. When it was their own personal cellphone, you always had that little bit of a hesitant barrier between me and them because that was their phone. And I didn't have a stayover their phone. So I feel like I have a little bit more control if the Chromebook is the only distraction. I have a lot less missing assignments. I tried to go back to looking at my grades compared from like last semester to this semester and I can't, I don't have any hardcore data, but I would have to guess that my Ds and Fs are, I don't have a ton of Ds and Fs anyway, but I have definitely got less Ds and Fs than I do now. And that is all attributed to missing assignments. I think some of them had just kind of given up and thought, okay, I'm here, I might as well use my time for what it's for and I'm going to do some work. And so that's a great thing. So, do you have any questions for us?
I would like to add one story about peaceful and I don't think, this was the best comment, at the end of our very first day, we were doing, we were doing our cap exam makeups, so a student had gone all day to school and then had to do cap exams. And she was the last one in the room and I said, tell me how your day went. And she said, I, well, I want my phone. And I said, but how was your day? And she said, well, I would have to say it was peaceful. My notifications weren't going on and on and on and I didn't have the drama today. So I thought our students should be able to come to school and be peaceful, right? It should be a safe spot, so that was one of my best comments. There is a ton, but that's one of them. Anything for us?
Thank you all, we appreciate you for backing us up with this.
You can't get ninety percent of people to agree that the sky is blue, so it's pretty awesome.
There's always that one guy, right?
So opening, opening day, there was three percent tampered?
So there was three percent or less.
How many have we had to replace since?
Um, I don't have an exact count on that. What we did was we set up a account similar to what we do with Chromebooks. So we assign fees for yonder damage that are associated with the student account. And then obviously, when we released our policy regulation, our practice would be that if there was damage or a replacement was needed, they paid the fee associated with replacing the pouch. And it's that ongoing process. I can get you the number of damage, I'd have to pull that data for you and share it with you. I know one of my biggest concerns and Ms. Scheller, obviously it was a concern of hers as the building principal, we were more, what is dismissal going to look like these first couple of days when you're trying to get everybody out of two main entrance slash exit points at the high school for car riders and bus riders? And there was no difference whatsoever, if anything, it was probably faster getting kids out of the front door, out of the hallways, so.
I have to say, as a parent, I'm spending less time telling my child at home to put her phone down at the dinner table. She, you know, it's not glued in her hand anymore, even at home, it's spilling over to where now, you know, she, she actually looks up and tells me about her day and I don't have to ask. So it's a difference everywhere, not, not just in the classroom.
We did have one student say that. But I know I can live without it now. I'm going home, I don't have to.
Well, I used to always say, you know, dinner, dinner, you put your phone down, we're not, we're not bringing our cellphones to the dinner table. And now I don't have to say that anymore, I mean, she's, she's down there, sometimes she even stands and talks to me in the living room.
I will have to say, we were at our state conference last week and we had several superintendents come up to us and ask us how our implementation has been going and we have a few that are actually going to start it next year as well.
All right, next we have the Community Teachers Association Report.
All right, good evening. So I have some shout-outs to share with you all tonight. Starting at Alma Schrader, they wanted to give a shout-out to the SPED team because they are just an amazing group. They cannot say enough about them, they have a lot on their plates like everyone else, but they always are positive and they're there for all their students. Excuse me, at Blanchard, the counselor Bethany Phelps always goes the extra mile to make sure the students' needs are met emotionally, physically, and mentally. She is such an asset to our building and we appreciate her so much. Big shout-out to Krista Williams, Ms. Cow, Lori Chapasso, Bethany, Tracy Rutherford for coming down to help with the book fair. Ms. Sherry helped count the money and Laura helped find more coins. The whole staff was really flexible that week in bringing so many bags to the event. At CAO, the shout-out goes to our superintendent, says here, I don't think our superintendent gets enough credit for his contribution to our community and district. While his work is always focused on the quality of education our students receive, I have experienced firsthand the compassion he has for our staff. Recently, I was ill, he personally contacted me to express his concern and was eager to help me with whatever I needed. I realize he can't do this for everyone, but I know that this is a common practice for him and I was blessed by his kindness, so thank you, Dr. Benyon. At Central Academy, Ms. DeWitt, she's building confidence and teamwork in their esports team. The students competed at the regional event recently and they had multiple coaches from area schools contact Ms. DeWitt about how excited and positive our students were toward their teams. Also, Ms. Borelli, she's for staying very close, in close contact with students and families when they are seeking additional resources outside of school. So this past week, a mother of a student came in to thank Ms. Borelli for writing letters to her son each week while he was getting extra help outside of school. The student asked his mom to come and tell Ms. Borelli this in person. Shout-out to Ms. Wadley for setting our students up for success with the JAG program. She is currently competing at the state conference in Jefferson City with four of our students in multiple events. At Clipper, shout-out to the cafeteria staff and custodial staff, they do an amazing job helping out when they can. They always go above and beyond for the students. At CTC, shout-out to Emily Elliott, she did a fantastic job orchestrating the mock interviews. We had approximately five hundred and thirty-six student interviews, which you had heard about earlier. Shout-out to CTC teachers and students who hosted Jefferson Elementary's fourth-grade students on their career PBL. It really was an awesome day, or awesome morning for sure. Shout-out to Ms. Powell and Ms. Sterns for coordinating prospective student interview day. We hosted roughly six hundred and twenty secondary students. At the Early Childhood Center, shout-out to Ms. Lisa and her team, teacher assistants, Ms. Lori, Ms. Chandra, Ms. Angela, and Mr. Brent. Also shout-out to our administrator, Dr. Sidney, thanks for all the above, all the above, going above and beyond for tirelessly supporting our littles. At Franklin, shout-out to Mr. Keith, the head custodian. He has been putting in ten to twelve hours each day until the vacancy was filled, the building is always clean and tidy. At the high school, shout-out to Ms. Hollis and Ms. Moore for always going above and beyond to check on our students' mental health and to make sure they have everything they need to thrive. Shout-out to Ms. Stalzing and Ms. Romine in sending emails to advisors, checking on their students' work and asking for help to keep them on track. At Jefferson, shout-out to all the teachers who came and helped make our JE Bingo Night a success last week. We appreciate all the extra time our teachers put in after school. At the junior high, shout-out to Victoria Kiesel as our EL specialist. She is always quick to support the staff at the junior high in teaching us how to modify assignments to better meet the needs of our students. She has been a mighty warrior for our students. When she sees them struggling, she does not hesitate to jump in to help both the students and teachers. The teachers are better because of Victoria. The strategies and modifications she teaches us have allowed us, have also proven to help other students too. And this person says they count this as a win-win for her and all of our students. Also at the junior high, the science team is so awesome at planning engaging activities to help students experience concepts. They coordinate well to help cover when staff are out sick within the department and across the building. At the middle school, shout-out to Ms. Hill for providing great strategies to the students and me. Also shout-out to Ms. Medlin for teaching me all the ins and outs of special education. Sammy Gross has worked so hard as our school social worker. Sammy Gross has worked so hard as our school social worker. She is always aware of what is going on with our students and will do anything to provide them the help they need. She truly has a heart of gold. And the final shout-out kind of is the overall one, and this person said they would like to give a shout-out to the entire SPED staff across the district. You know, as a team, they're finishing up transfer conferences so that they know who students, the students will be coming to them next year. You know, it takes a lot of planning and work, and it's really been a flawless process because of them, so. Only other thing I wanted to share with you all is CTA attended the MSTA Regional Capital Day on March 5th. There were seven of us that went, so Lisa Probst, Carly Wyatt, Tanya Whitehead, Tara Damrin, Haley Russell, Shannon Bergoff, and myself. We actually got to meet with Representative Hovas and Boss, and they introduced us on the floor of the House. So we had some good conversations, you know, it's always important to continue advocate for public education with our legislators, so we really appreciated the time they took to support us, and allowing us to go was also appreciated as well, so. Does anyone have any other questions for me or CTA? All right, thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next, we have Treasurer Finance Report, Ms. Doudat.
This report is for February. We started beginning fund balance in the general fund of $23.7 million. We received a little over $6 million of revenues. These revenues include current tax dollars that we are still getting. Our expenses were $2.3 million, and then we also transferred $1.3 million, which we do monthly, to the special revenue fund, leaving us with the ending fund balance of $26.2 million, which is about 71% fund balance percentage. The cash and investment detail is listed. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Support Services Report. Mr. Crowe.
Thank you. Get that switched over. So, first off, an update on Blanchard Elementary. There's a roof that has been in the process of being replaced for about the last two weeks. It's a project that you all approved a while ago. We were in the queue on that, finally had to get through winter weather, and it's going along nicely, probably a few more weeks, and that project will be wrapped up. Starting next week, we're expecting our indoor turf to start the process of being installed in our indoor facility, and so we're excited about that project coming to completion. There'll be a few other things we have to do there at the end, and it's kind of like Lego blocks coming together, pieces of puzzle, where multiple things have to take place all at the same time. Indoor track surface coming in, wall padding getting in, signage going up, and equipment being moved in, and so on and so forth. So, again, that project will be completed very soon. And Red Star is progressing very nicely. We actually have paint on the walls in the classrooms, and so we're really excited about that. That's one of those things that you know it's getting close. We're not yet to the flooring stages, and, you know, still construction taking place, but we're extremely excited about that. And then, an update with the welding lab that you all approved at last month's meeting at CTC. We're gonna be getting site work again after the holiday. We're gonna have to replace the water main where that is, because we cannot build a building on top of the main water line. We don't want to do that in case that ever busts, and we have kind of put ourselves into the corner, so some of our infrastructural work will need to take place before we actually start digging all the foundations. Things are moving nicely, as well as with food service and transportation as well. Any questions, concerns, or comments, I'll be happy to address.
Are we still on track to have Central Academy open in the beginning of the next quarter?
Yes.
Perfect.
Thanks. The Red Star with the paint going on the walls, we're close to flooring, yes. And what that does is it sets up a series of dominoes, if you recall. With Central Academy moving out from underneath this roof, we will have ECSC moving in simultaneously. There'll be some moving pains with it where we have, but we've done this as a district many, many times. Our staff always comes together, we'll have some stuff in storage as we're holding that, moving things back in, moving things out, and we're preparing for those moves.
Thank you. All right, next, we have District-wide Athletic.
He didn't really have anything to report.
Okay.
Just started.
Okay. All right. Next is Board Reports, so the MSBA Delegate Report.
So the Lunch and Learns are in process now, hopefully you guys are able to attend those. April 9th is the Jeff City trip. I don't know if anybody's registered to go do that or not, I don't have the travel and stuff, I'm not even gonna make it, but those are the two big things, so sent out a summary of the last one, see if you guys didn't get a chance, I'm gonna keep trying to do that just so we can spread what we learned. It was exciting accounting stuff, let's do that. Sorry for the questions.
Thanks, we have a similar, it's a similar PowerPoint that you sent us. We looked at it today, that we get from the other.
It was really interesting. It was scary and interesting all at the same time. But that's all.
All right, next, we have Legislative Report.
Not a lot to report there. Right now, they're going through their spring recess. The only thing to watch out for, there's several dozen different bills that are being pushed through the House and Senate. Unfortunately, because of time, they're now trying to put them into these big mega-bills that, while they have a lot of good things, they don't, they have a lot of unintended bad consequence items in it as well, so we'll keep you updated on that as things come out. And had a good conversation with John Voss about vouchers and charter schools and some of the consequences that, while on the surface it looks like a good idea, they don't see the unintended consequences that it may have for our district. One of the points that I made to him directly was that, you know, as some larger municipal schools, St. Louis, Kansas City, Springfield, Columbia, those type of schools, they may need to have an opportunity for students to check out and go to other places, but in school districts that are performing well, you know, if you start a charter or a voucher system, it may have unintended consequences. You know, I just brought up what it did to Kansas City, where there were several charter schools that opened up, pulled resources out of Kansas City public schools. They had to close down a lot of programs, sporting, I mean, they lost about 90% of their local funding, which, I mean, if you think about that, if we lost 90% of our funding to charter schools, what that would do to our, just our high school, not to mention, you know, we've got Central Academy, we have Early Childhood Center. I mean, all of those programs will become potential loss. I mean, if we have to just focus funds on, you know, educating our students, then other programs would suffer, and that was a point that he hadn't really thought about, so we'll keep in touch with him and see what happens.
Thank you. All right, next is Cape Public School Foundation Report. I'm gonna do that. Ms. McDonald is, was not available to stay. The Tiger Golf Tournament is Monday, May 13th. I got a couple extra of these, if anybody wants to sign up. Also, I think you can, you can reach out to Ms. McDonald for more information if you're interested in participating in that. And if anybody wants to volunteer, they'll take volunteers to help as well. Okay, moving on. Next, we have the Approval of the Consent Agenda. This includes minutes from our February meeting, payment of bills, Career and Technology Center tuition, and of course, prospectus. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So, second.
Any discussion on these, or the thing anybody wants to add? The tuition rates for the CTC are...
It has not changed.
Yeah, they're not changing. All right, those in favor of approving the consent agenda items indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion second and carry. Next up is business, new business? I don't think we have anything. Okay. Next, information proposals from board members. Does anyone have anything to add?
I have one thing.
Yes.
So, as everyone knows, the election for, the city elections are next Tuesday, and on that ballot are two positions for school board, myself and Paul, are running for reelection, but in the event that I do not get reelected, I just wanted to say it's been a great honor to serve on this board for the past 18 years. Worked with a lot of good people, both on the board and administrators, I mean, kind of reflecting on things that we've accomplished over the last 18 years, and looking at the district, you know, in 2006 to where we are today, I mean, all of our campuses across the district are drastically different, and the amount of programs that we've been able to implement in all of those buildings, on and off the field, have just been spectacular. It's been really fun to watch the growth of our district, and all of the staff members, the teachers are just outstanding, and to watch them grow throughout the years. The CTA had their candidate forum, and it was interesting because Bailey Croman was on stage as one of the moderators, and it was interesting because her mother taught my daughters in 2nd grade, so it's kind of neat to see the evolution of mother-daughters, you know, coming back and teaching in their alma mater, so still haven't been able to convince my daughter to come back and be a 1st grade teacher yet, but we still have hope, so. Anyway, just wanted to say thank you, it's been a great honor, and hopefully I will be back for another three years, but that's all I wanted to say.
Does anyone else have anything? There being no further business to come before the board, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
Those in favor of adjournment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone, we appreciate your time.